We also don't have a quorum of commissioners.
Same sort of just Florida that wasn't letting you go.
From how said he was going to zoom and Jeff thought it was going to zoom.
Okay, it is November 12th, it is 4:03 and we'll go ahead and call this meeting in order. I'll do a roll call of Planning Commission members, Howard Tripp. I can see you on there.
Here, here, here.
Joey Edwards, I think had a conflict tonight. Steve Stevens.
Here.
Dave Clark-Berle.
Here.
And Jason Murpho.
Here.
Heather Lind here. County Commissioners as of right now, Commissioner Beedler, Commissioner Mudge.
Here.
And Commissioner Edwards. Changes or additions to the agenda? We have minutes to approve from October 28th. I was not at that meeting.
Oh, I moved to approve the minutes from October 28th?
Yep.
We may have to put them on the next agenda because we need three.
Three of them, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, did Howard and David, were they on the 28th? I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, okay.
Dave, were you on the October 28th?
Yeah, I was here for the 28th.
Okay, cool. So the three of you can vote to approve. So we have a motion to approve, I just need a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Updates from staff.
Great. So we continue to work on various applications that are in the making. I think we made a pretty good update last time. We're making progress on a stakeholder meeting to look at introduction of camping regulations into the code. We continue to work on the Box Creek gravel pit application. We're still working with CDOT to look at what kind of improvements they're going to ask of if the operation were to be approved. That is an improvement that would be required onto Highway 24 from County Road 10. Could be a significant improvement that needs to be done there, so we really want to have that fully vetted before we bring that forward and let you know what kind of impact that would be. And as well as we're working on a road maintenance agreement for County Road 10. Again, if this were to be an application that would be considered, we want to make sure that the impacts are properly mitigated through a road maintenance agreement on County Road 10 as well, which has had some improvements to it, and so we want to make sure that the maintenance and any other kind of impact would be mitigated. So continuing to work on those, Melissa's working on those. And to, we do not, I believe, have a hearing date set yet, but we do have a hearing date set for Timber Ranch, Major Subdivision and PUD. That's going to be heard January 13th. And so that preliminary is in and out for review, so we'll be working on that. We continue to work on an application known as the Mountain 515. It is a PUD without subdivision, so this application is coming in and asking for new zoning. It is on one of our older historic manufactured home parks on the east side of town, on East 3rd. It is adjacent to the mining district, so we have kind of a whole array of concerns that we're working through right now through the referral process before we'll feel like it's ready for hearing. So that is some of the ones that I can think of. We continue to work on outfitting and guiding. We are looking to have a discussion about the OHV regulations with the Board of County Commissioners this month, and so stand by for updates on that as soon as we've had a chance to discuss it with them.
I think there's one application we didn't bring up last week. It's another accessory dwelling unit CUP. And we did accept that application, so that hearing will be on January 27th, and I will send you all information soon.
We did take the moratorium extension to the Board of County Commissioners on the signed code, and they did pass the extension of time. We've extended it to March 19th. And we really thank you again for all the valuable feedback and information. I think that we will then have an opportunity to bring back to you the draft document with ample time for implementation. So I think those things are good. Another thing that, I think it's also very good to talk a little bit about some of the housing initiatives and work that's being done. So I think that you are all aware of the infill sites or the housing project that we refer to as 10-2. This is 24 housing units that are to be located on Sixth Street and Third Street, had the groundbreaking on the 23rd of October. And the first things that were being done on the site were the environmental cleanup, and so pretty exciting. There's also a great deal of interest in potential buyers for those units. So that work is progressing. There is another project that our department has been working on collectively through our Housing Project Manager and our consultant, Michael Yearman, and that is, and also some consultants, OLC, right, our feasibility group?
Oh, yeah.
OLC?
OLC.
OLC, thanks. So, and that's the Harrison Ball Field. This is a property that is owned by Lake County, a little over 12 acres. And so there's been some different things happening on that site, and we've just kind of heard that there's a lot of community conversations happening around some of these projects. So we just wanted to provide some information in case anybody would want some more, but we'll give you just kind of an update right now. And that is that the feasibility study that's been being done on indoor recreation and potentially an aquatic center and some other amenities have looked at several different sites. They've looked at the community field area, they've looked at the library property, and they've looked at Harrison Ball Field as potentially a location that we could cite the future potential of an indoor rec, aquatic rec space, public space. So you may hear something about Harrison Ball Field in that context, and so four different options have been brought forth, and the board is continuing to consider what that means and just kind of looking at the cost of it and what kind of initiatives would have to take place in order to ever bring something like that to fruition. So that information is available on our website, and you can get access to kind of what's going on there. The other thing with 12 acres, a good master plan of a county-owned property like this is thinking about all the different kinds of uses that we would bring on there. So obviously, when we are in a time of need for community housing and we're in a bit of a housing crisis, housing is another component that would be thought of on this parcel. There, so, and any good master plan would look at open space, public use, connectivity. And so it has been the desire of the Board of County Commissioners to allow staff to look at these different planning components. And most recently, an RFP was put out for a LI-Tech developer to help us understand what it would mean to put a low-income tax credit project there, rental housing project there. It's thought that this site would be not only a good site to potentially look at for public use as far as recreation, connectivity, parks, open space, those kind of things, but also the thought of creating a diverse type of housing. So for sale, market rates, workforce, missing middle perhaps, and also what about a low-income tax credit housing project that serves our real deficit of needing rental housing? So that is also something that's being explored. And part of that work with the group that has been selected, it is a local planning group, SE group, that has been chosen. And part of the front end of that work is going to be the public engagement piece, which means going out to the community and really understanding what the community would like to see in that area. We believe perhaps there's some concern out in the community that there's not going to be that community piece and that, you know, that things are maybe happening unbeknownst. So if you get those kind of questions, you'll have more information about it. We're happy to answer it. We've got all kinds of information. Jackie's here to answer any questions anybody might have. She, Jackie Wheelhan, is our Housing Project Manager in County Planning and Development. She's worked really closely on the housing elements of this project at Harrison and also all of the infill sites. She's really responsible for the fact that we've been able to leverage over $2 million in congressional dollars and grant money into making this housing a reality. So she's been amazing in being able to bring these things to fruition. So I'm just, if you have any questions, happy to answer them. Jackie's here. But we just, just understand that sometimes the narrative in the community doesn't have all of the information, and so happy to provide that and help any way that we can if there's ever any information that you would like to know about it in case you get approached or asked about what's happening there. But the very first part of the next planning part, everything that's happening right now is a planning piece of Harrison Ball Field. It is not, we don't have the final plan yet, and there's going to be an opportunity for the whole community, anybody interested in participating in that and having a voice in it, so. Any questions?
Yeah, quick question. So that's the ball field plus the lot kind of next to it? Is that where all the storage containers are?
Yeah, yeah, that we own. The county owns 12 acres and there's this kind of a, an extension of West Park. And then there is a small horizontal strip of land that runs north to south that is directly adjacent to the property that the county owns and that the school district owns. And so there's the large 12-acre parcel directly off of Harrison to the west, and then there, it's separated to West Park by a strip of acreage that's owned by the school district. But it's predominantly all of that. It's got great connectivity, it's got great access. It's a pre-level site. We've done a flow study to find out how the sanitary flow is in that area. So it's just preparatory steps that are being taken to just better understand the site and the possibility of putting in infrastructure there. And just, the only work that's being done right now is just planning work to find out what would be the best use of that space.
So this plan include cost estimate feasibility studies as well?
Absolutely, yep. So rec already has, the rec planning is, has already some costs associated with all of the different options. And then the piece that's being put out on the LI-Tech is exactly the same. We'll want cost estimates on all of that as well. So that we've got all, absolutely, that essential part of understanding, better understanding what's feasible and what the cost will be. So anything anybody else would like to share on that topic?
You mentioned it, but I'll just emphasize that like a ballot initiative or some expense to cover the rec, if that is even, I mean, that's not a decision for this board to make either. So that would, but we have been talking about it in terms of that is the only way that this could work, given the other implications to our finances and general fund and other priorities that we need to consider as well.
Thank you, Ann. I mean, I think as we all know, there's lots of conversations that happen outside of real public meetings, which is a bummer, but. Can you guys, one of you remind me, I know there was a long time ago when we talked about there was like social media stuff happening, and Tim was going to put together some sort of like guidelines as far as how people should or shouldn't engage on social media. And I feel like there was a question in here about what we should or shouldn't engage with as far as like what is expected of Planning Commissioners, what's expected of, you know, what have you. I just was wondering if we could inquire about that again, just so that everybody kind of understands exactly what. Because in my opinion, it should be like, hey, guys, if you have questions, reach out. Not anybody like us trying to explain the story online, but the torches being lit up online right now are so amazing, and I just really would hope that we can find a way to like get people to show up to meetings or actually understand the actual situation rather than create. I mean, there's people talking about getting petitions out right now because they think something's happening to this ball field tomorrow. So I just think like if there's a way that we can say, hey, you know, but I want to make sure that everybody is on the same page about how that should or shouldn't happen on social media. And I know we had this conversation about something else before on social media, and I just can't, and Tim was here, and I think he was saying he was going to devise something that maybe.
Yeah, I don't know if like specific policies were created yet, but we do have communications folks and staff people, so maybe we can circle back and just kind of emphasize that that's a real need for us to get on top of it and respond somehow.
Yeah, it just would be good to be like, even if it's like an avenue to where you get the communication, because, yeah, I mean, there were people that attended a community meeting and were told that they just need to start getting petitions if they want to stop the county from doing something. So, and it's just tough to like not respond and say, but we don't want to do it the wrong way. So I just, it would be good if you do have somebody that somebody can get on that.
Yeah. I think that's really great advice, and I think, so yeah, we will definitely circle back and see how to, you know, just try to promote good information and resources and how to get it. We want to make sure that we've got it. We do have a website just for the 10-2 project. And so we do continue to launch kind of project-specific. We're going to have a website just for the One Community project, which is the visioning and then going into the comp plan. It's going to have its own website. The housing, one of our housing projects has its own website. I'm sure that if and when Harrison would become an actual plan, it will have its own website for information too, but how do we, how, this is a different thing that we're trying to solve in as much as how do we, you know, provide a resource for getting the information, so.
Well, and part of our planning with the One Community project to, to try to get as much community engagement as possible for the visioning process for the comp plan is how do we reach everybody? And I'm hoping we'll learn some really great tools from that, is like both, both ways. Like when you're meeting with these groups of people, giving them the avenues of how they can find the information from us and then how we reach them better. So I'm hoping that through that process, we're also going to see a much better improvement of like how you get, how you connect with those people and.
Absolutely.
I mean, I get, I mean, I can't go to every community meeting, so I understand why they're all not sitting here, you know, but, so it's hard, and how do you know what to get involved with and what not to, and so.
And I guess that would be the only other, thank you for mentioning that, because we do have, our engagement team remains open. And what we're trying to do is just reach all members of our community. So if there is an ice-climbing group that gets together monthly or bimonthly or something, and you participate in it or you know someone, we're just really, it's this idea of leaving no one behind. And so we're really trying to find our community connectors that will help us get out and just have a conversation. It's a really quick kind of values, you know, what's important to you, what are you fearful of, and what would you like to see? And those are basically the questions that we're leading conversations with and really wanting to hear from all segments of our community. So if you either participate in a group or want more information, it does remain to an open group. We ask for a letter of why somebody would want to be engaged, but that's just because this is not really a platform group, right? So we, you know, we don't really want it to evolve into that. It's really just trying to reach everybody in our community, so.
Awesome. Thanks for reminding me of that. Okay, I think, so we don't have a quorum of commissioners. Do we need one to proceed?
They can, is there any chance of sending a text to anyone and asking if they can jump on? Otherwise, they can listen to the recording. I think the nature of this public hearing could be captured in them listening to the recording. You know, I think if we were hearing a subdivision, we couldn't proceed, but I do think the nature, the applicant is here and he's prepared and his ask is a bit unique, so I think it's something that could definitely be heard via listening to the recording if either of them can't get on. So the board and the Planning Commission's discretion, I would say I think we'd be okay moving forward.
Okay.
If not.
Well, I'll go ahead and open the file. Everybody feels familiar with that. Okay, new business. It's File 24-38, which is the Continental Divide cabins group camp conditional use permit. The Lake County Planning Commission, the Board of County Commissioners will now conduct a joint public hearing. This statement I am reading shall be incorporated into and made part of the record on these proceedings. The Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners have jurisdiction to conduct a joint public hearing on a conditional use permit application under Section 3.6.1 of the Lake County Land Development Code. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether the conditional use permit application should be approved. In considering that matter, the commission will address the approval criteria set forth in Section 3.6.1.F of the Lake County Land Development Code. The procedure to be followed in this hearing will be, one, members of the commission and the board will disclose any ex parte communications. Two, county staff will make initial presentation. Three, applicant may then make their presentation. Four, after that, any other persons either supporting or opposing the application may present evidence. Five, supporting and opposing witnesses may be questioned by the commission and the board. Once questioning is concluded, no further questioning is permitted unless granted by the chair. Six, the applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. The parties and witnesses are asked not to submit redundant, irrelevant, or cumulative evidence. If someone has already made the point that you wish to make, please simply say so. The chair will also require that all comments be made to the Planning Commission and the board and that there be no dialogue between the applicant and members of the audience. At the conclusion of the evidentiary portion of the hearing, the chair will entertain a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing, and the commission will discuss and weigh the evidence. Then there will be a motion to close the discussion phase of the joint public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will then retire from the meeting, and the Chair of the Planning Commission will entertain a motion on the application. The motion may take the form of one of the following recommendations. One, approve the application with no conditions. Two, approve the application with recommended conditions. Three, approve the application with newly identified conditions. Or four, deny the application. The Planning Director shall make a record of any substantial discussion on the motion and include that in the record with the recommendation of the commission. The commission's recommendations will be in the form of a statement of motion. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the commission or to the form or substance of these proceedings? Hearing none, I will now ask each Planning Commission member and then each County Commissioner if you've had any ex parte communications to disclose, and if so, please disclose them now. Howard Tripp?
None.
Joey Edwards not here. Steve Stevens?
None.
Dave Clark-Berle?
None.
Jason Murpho?
None.
And Heather Lind, none. And Commissioner Mudge?
None.
Okay. Staff, maybe?
Thank you. How, sorry, how is trying to get in, but? Not working. So I told him I haven't seen anybody. If he continues to struggle, you could just tell him that you need to watch him.
Okay, okay.
Tell him if it's, because must be having.
Either he's got a wrong link?
Wrong link or something, because we haven't even seen him on our account, so.
I'll try to send him the link.
Okay. Um, okay. Um, this is a conditional use permit application, very unique in as much as Mr. Remo was granted a CUP in 2009 six for the Continental Divide cabins. And through that process, he was allowed an entitlement of eight cabins. Today, he is back to ask for a new CUP. You know, the basis of the CUP is that he wants to reduce the amount of entitlement. And strangely enough, there is nothing in our code that allows him to come in and modify, to a lesser degree, the amount of original entitlement that he was granted in 2006. Perhaps it brings about the case that there should be a way in which to do this administratively so that an applicant doesn't have to go through this degree of review in order to consider this. So the other, one of the other things that was imposed upon the original CUP was an annual review, there it is, an annual review of the conditional use permit. I've only seen this on a couple other entitlements that we've taken over since I've been there with the county. And of the other two, I can kind of understand the nature of needing an annual report, but in this particular case, I think that an annual review is overly burdensome and onerous. The site has been developed with building permits, adhered to all of the conditions of approval, and there would be no basis for staff to have ever looked at this existing conditional use permit and say, this is one that needs an annual review. The code allows for staff to bring forth with due cause a reason to review a conditional use permit. So it exists in the code anyway, and it seems overly burdensome to continue that this particular conditional use permit would have to do an annual review. Yeah, three of the cabins, have all four cabins been built or just three? Oh, two, two, two of the four have been built. I apologize. I was looking at your survey that cites some of the.
And the survey shows.
Oh, the survey shows the existing, that's right, okay. So the, so I, so I'm suggesting that that condition that has been imposed for the almost two decades has been overly onerous. And he has faithfully said in the reviews, I know the first time I received one, I wasn't sure what I, why I was reviewing it. And so I would say, let's go back to just what the code allows for. And if there's ever a basis that is discovered, then we would look at reviewing the conditional use permit, but I think it's overly onerous to make it a condition of approval. One of the, the other corrections that I sent over to you was that the original application had said to reduce it to three, and there was a revised narrative that asked for the four. So today, if I'm correct, you're asking for four cabins.
Four cabins.
Four cabins. So.
Or I was going to remove four cabins.
Yes, remove four cabins from the entitlement. This is still 50% of the density that was originally awarded. And the other item is that I did not have, and so this was really great because it didn't get put in the file. I had, we now have the letter from the State Forest Service that he did a remarkable job. Not only did he do protect the space around the cabins, but he installed two 550-gallon systems along with a pump to be able to mitigate any kind of fire impact. So I have, in the correction that I sent you today, the conditions removed the fire mitigation plan, okay? So when you get, if and when you get ready for a motion of conditional approval, it's been revised in the, in this one, if anybody needs a hard copy of it. And I really think that that's really all I have. There was one other action that I just want to make sure that we're intentional about that might not have been as straightforward as it should have been in the original, when this happened. So the original two minor claims that the applicant owns were divided by the yellow line on there. They came in and did a plat amendment where they modified the parcels, but then the legal description with the original CUP didn't match up. So today, we're taking care of that too. It's more of a housekeeping item that when the original entitlement was given, it looked at the land as being these two parcels instead of these two parcels. So now, based on the legal description of the entitlement that this CUP would grant, that cleans up that lot-line adjustment as well. So really, we're just kind of cleaning things up, reducing the amount of degree of use. And so that's, staff, let's suggest that's an easing finding to see, find that all of the conditions of approval have been met and that the use-specific standards have been met as well. So, open it to questions, or I'd be happy to introduce the applicant.
Let's go ahead and introduce the applicant.
All right, applicant, please introduce yours.
Thank you, Ann.
You're welcome.
Completely covered all the issues. I just want to say it's been a privilege to work with Lake County back when we got the original approval. And, um, though huts continue to be extraordinarily popular, I think they bring a fair amount of business to Lake County. And, um, as Anne indicated in her writing, um, 84 in January, the 10th Mountain Division Huts Association is considering purchasing 10 acres of the two existing cabins and may or may not go forward with, uh, building a sort of more fortunate cabin, but, but thank you.
You're welcome. I will say that we have used, um, the Continental Divide Cabin as a model for other, um, you know, as an example when other applicants have come in because we have found that it has done an outstanding job of, of being compliant.
So I just have a question, why the reduction in?
I have a cabin adjoining the ten, the two 10 acre parcels. I have a personal cabin as well as the huts. It's simply a function of too many people if we build all eight cabins. And it will take away from the hut users' experience. Just enough bodies and that's the amount of, of four cabins.
So if that was ever, if you sold it to the 10th Mountain Division, they could reapply for a CUP and ask for an increase? Would that be a possibility, even though you're trying to reduce it?
I mean, it's a possibility. We, we are aware that the 10th Mountain supports the, the proposal before us. So it, it is possible, um, to, for a future use at some point to acquire the same parcel and come back in and ask for, code allows five people per acre. So a density of 50 people is what the, the code would allow. But then you'd have to take into account where the other structures are cited and impacts and some. But could somebody someday acquire this property and come in and ask for, um, what the code allows? Yes.
There's just extra steps, right? And so this like.
Maybe deter is that a little bit?
Yeah, unless you put a deed restriction or something. And we, then unless you put a deed restriction or something, then probably.
Yeah.
And we talked about that.
strenuously object. My neighbor being.
Yeah, you would, and, and we did ask.
And or my children or my grandchildren.
Yes, we did ask Lee, um, first because we didn't really, we, we were concerned that this process was a little overly onerous for what he wanted to do. So we did at least, um, suggest that he might want to check with his attorney about a deed restriction. If, if his buyer was okay and that would protect it in perpetuity. But 10th Mountain and, and Lee decided that the best course of action was to go ahead and apply for the conditions for them, so.
It's a mutual decision, the 10th supports what we're doing.
Yeah.
In writing.
Any other questions? Can you try and answer the planning commission? Anybody on Zoom, questions? Well, with that, we think.
Well, so the only question I have, but this is, so this is showing for approval, but then it shows with these conditions. So is this a motion with condition?
Yeah, cause then this says, are you good with the following conditions?
Oh, they put it up there. So like in three sections.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Um, yeah, and that's the revised one from today.
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
But first we'll make a motion to close public hearing and the commissioners leave the meeting.
Right. I move that we close the public hearing portion of this.
For a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
So you didn't accept any public comment?
Sorry, we didn't have any public.
I guess there aren't any public. You could just not sit down. Sit down. Oh, Sarah, you're cool. Oh, thank you. Good to see you, Lee. All right, thanks for your.
Any discussion before we hear our motion?
Anne, this isn't super relevant maybe, but I assume that if the, the 10th or the future owner of the property wanted to build those two additional cabins, they would have to come before the planning commission presented, do all of those things.
Uh, no, so nope, they just have to get the building permits.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're approved right now for eight. We're reducing it to four, but only two are currently though.
Yeah, but so, but what dictates the cabins or like the, what they would build there is just the building permits.
The original, yeah, the original CUP and then the building permits, yeah.
You know, and that brings up, but that does bring up a good point, actually, dude, that's very articulate. Because, um, these are commercial structures and so they would have to get a, they will have to go through a site plan review. The, the planning commission, you will have to approve the site plan, but not another conditional use permit. So when they're ready, if and when they're ready to ever pull the building permits, because they are of a commercial nature, the planning commission does approve all site plans. So there'd have to be a site plan that you would review.
Just interested, thank you.
Wow, that's good.
What question?
That's a great question.
I just want to say, commercial, however unique, in that they're 100% independent of, uh, electrical system, water. Yeah, they're standalone structures in, in, in the wood with full toilet, uh, cisterns for water, wood for heat, silver for light.
Yeah. Yeah, we created, um, in the last couple of years, after decades of trying, we created the backcountry structure. So we, we have some like structures like that now. I know we didn't have that back when you, um, petitioned for.
We were inventing.
You were, you gave us, you gave us the pathway.
Any other questions or comments? Somebody want to make a motion?
All right. Uh, I move the planning commission recommend approval of file number 24-38 Continental Divide Cabin CUP. An application for a group camp consisting of four individual cabins located at 26467 Highway 24 North and legally described as number 15286 Point Breeze Load, containing 10.41 acres to the Board of County Commissioners with the following conditions. One, file number 06-08 Continental Divide Cabin CUP, conditional approval is rescinded and now replaced by file number 24-38 Continental Divide Cabin CUP, which allows for a maximum of four cabins and an occupancy not to exceed eight people per cabin. Two, there shall be no outdoor burning except in propane fueled barbecues located on the decks. There shall be no fireworks or firearms on site. Three, there shall be facilities for trash located either inside each cabin or any outdoor trash receptacle shall be bear proof. Four, all statements and representations made by the applicant in its application and in hearing shall be binding and considered as conditions of approval. And further finding that as analyzed and conditioned within the staff report dated November 12th, 2024, section 3 dot 6 dot 1 F, approval criteria have been adequately met.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, I'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Howard Tripp?
Um, I.
Steve Steven?
Hold forward.
Okay.
Approved.
Dave Clark-Berrell?
Aye.
Jason Murco?
Aye.
Heather Lynn, aye. Great. And then for future amendments?
Yes.
Is that just something that like goes on your list of?
I think that's going to go on.
You should do that someday.
The list of code amendments, we've talked about it for a while because, you know, we do get these times where this process seems too much to go through. And we should be able to administratively, um, um, amend. So yes, we've got signed code. We're also going to bring you height at the same time, cause our height is a little, our definition of height is really awkward. So we're going to do those together. If we had enough time, it'd be nice to throw this. This is going to take us a little more time though, but yes, it'll go on our 2025 parking list of code amendments.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn, anything else?
Nothing else for you this evening.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Okay, remember all these ones, and staff kept it really short.
Yeah.
Cause they're not going to last. Thanks, everyone. Thank you.